Start off with the lead.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone had a chance to renew the bill? I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
For a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Approval for the October 12th, 2022 meeting minutes, those were in your email that Courtney sent out. Anyone have a chance to look them over? There's no corrections or additions. Could I have approval? Motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
For a second.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. Okay, the mayor's report. We know the ARPA funds, we're bathrooms, we're gonna have a, under the old business, we're gonna have a Hickory Park bathroom update, so I can get to that then. Under the CFA application, the $50,000 engineering grant, planning grant was approved. So we got awarded $50,000. That's, that's good. That's the good news. On the sad, sad news, the GVRR, which was the grant for the Tully building, brick restoration was declined. And they've notified us that the grant funding that in turn funded the GVRR grant program has been exhausted. And they hope to be awarded funding in the future to continue the GVRR grant program. So if it comes around in the future, we'll reapply for it. We may have to start looking at our regular budget to start putting some money away though to take care of this building, I would think. Because we don't know if this grant's ever gonna come around again. So we'll discuss that when we get down to our yearly budget. The administrator and I attended the semi-annual New York Municipal Power Agency on October 25th. That's the agency that we're a member of, the Village of Virgin, and they buy our supplemental power over and above our hydro allocations. I believe there's 37 municipals in the state that are members of NIPA. The electric rates for the upcoming winter months were discussed in detail, with higher rates expected across all utilities this winter. With that being said, the NIPA Executive Board voted to transfer $8.6 million from the congestion mitigation fund. That's a fund that was a line item, that they've been collecting money from all the systems, because in the years prior, when we have congestion, it costs a lot of money, a lot of money. So they try to build up that congestion mitigation plan, so that when we do get hit, the agency does get hit with it, there's money put away already to offset it. But what they found is we haven't had the congestion that we were experiencing, so they transferred $8.6 million out of that fund and put it back into the general fund. And they're gonna use that $8.6 million to help offset the rates for this winter for all the members. So that, that'll help.
Do they know why that they haven't been experiencing the congestion like you?
Oh, better if they've been rebuilding lines, upgrades to infrastructure, probably some maybe possibly some of the generation plants that were offline for maintenance or whatever are back online. All those things come into play. So with that being said, we have been experiencing decongestion, so that money was available, so they felt it was a good time to pull it out of there, put it in the general, offset our rates somewhat. We did get an email though, from NIPA yesterday, and they're, they're expecting, the PSC has even come out with it, saying that they expect rates to go up 50%, electric rates to go up 50% this winter.
Wow.
Okay. So, I mean, our rates shouldn't see that, they're predicting our system here anywhere from 11 to 27% of an increase in electric. So it's better than 50%, like National Grid or our genie or NICE is gonna experience, because they've offset it with that other million of dollars. And then if it's a really harsh winter, it could be even more, you know? That's an average winter temperature, so if we experience a really harsh winter, the rates could be even more. It's all based, basically on natural gas. And everybody knows here where the situation with natural gas is here in this country now. It is what it is. That and the price of oil, so. Generation, you say, well, what's natural gas got to do with electric? Well, that's what they use to fire the turbines to generate the power. They've done away with a lot of fossil fuel plants for coal to generate, they don't have those anymore, so it's gas, so. And with the amount of gas they're exporting now also, everybody here in this country's gonna be paying more. So they're, they're thinking that we should stick a letter in with our next billing explaining some of this, so that all the residents get it along with their bill, and I'd like to see that done, just to explain a little bit. By the rates are gonna be higher this winter. It's, it's nothing that we're doing in-house here, but it's, it's the nature of the beast now, so. I received a letter of resignation from Kevin Donovan, he was our CAB liaison, which is the Citizens Advisory Board to the Milcic landfill. And in my report, I wish Kevin the best and his family the best, and thank him for all the, his many years of service to the community. Paul is offered to fill in as the CAB representative. It's only a meeting every quarter, so it's once every three months, but if you do that, it'd be great to fill in.
I'd serve. What do they cover? What's covered in these?
All things landfill.
All things landfill. You certainly get big.
How it can impact the town, the village, what's going on with, you know, up there?
Yeah, I'd like to see a report on that.
Okay. Paul?
Courtney, if you've got the schedule for it, I know they just met in October, so you should be scheduled for now.
Ginny Adams, when she was a trustee, she was our CAB representative for a long time. So that'll work out well. Well, thank you. I'd put thanks to here the Virgin Business and Civic Association for their great job they did for the ghost walk tour and the trunker treat that went out up at the Hickory Park, it was well-attended. I, I know I gave up probably 300 pieces of candy to the kids, you know, so that was great. There were quite a few vendors there, and everybody had a great time, and I'd like to see it grow and grow and grow each year. You know, I've always, I've always said, you know, it's great to see something in the village that gives us some identity, something like that, to bring people in the community together, and it was great, they had a bonfire there, and bales of straw, and people were sitting around and having a good time, so. I want to give thanks to all those involved with that festival. And I don't have all their names, so I just want to put a thank you out to all of them. Like I said, a good time was had by all, especially the children. And thanks to Todd Cartel, thank you Todd, Renee Verraro, Heather Peating, Marion Fleming and John Chuck for volunteering to serve on the Village of Virgin tree and park committee. We did get together on Saturday, this past Saturday, at the park and looked, had a walk through and came up with some ideas and things for down the road, things that we can address in a timely fashion, and all the things that we'd like to see, you know, in the future. So we're, we're meeting with that, and we'll brainstorm that at our next meeting, now that we got some ideas, and come up with some ideas to bring to the board and try to make the park, you know, really enjoyable for our residents. It's, I couldn't believe how many people were there using that park when we were there. Non-stop people walking. It gets a lot of use, so we'll see, make some improvements. DPW, guys are still picking up the brush, we got, until November 14th is the last day for brush pickup. We'll continue to pick up leaves as needed as they fall, but the brush, as far as the brush goes, that'll end on November 14th, and then pick back up in the spring. Planted trees, they're done milling the sidewalks, the lipage on them for the season. They've been readying the trucks and equipment for the winter season ahead, which they're all ready to go now. And we were gonna be working on an issue on Spring Street, there's a storm sewer over there that's clogged up with tree roots. We planned on actually doing it tomorrow, but I canceled that because the guys tried to put up, put our camera down through it today to see exactly where the blockages were, and they were, weren't able to get our camera through there. Our camera's a push camera, and the conduit is so big, it's a 30-inch conduit, and the cable on our camera, it just wads up in there and you can't, can't get enough to push the camera. So I contacted Akron, and I know the superintendent over there very well, and we work very well together with Mutual Aid, and they've got a real high-tech crawler camera that can go in there and crawl and see exactly where our problems are, and then we're gonna address it. I felt it wasn't the time, no sense digging it up, cutting, cutting into that pipe, and then you got another spot a few feet away from it, I'd rather get the whole picture of what's inside that pipe, and we may have to replace a lot more than, than I thought. It's about 125 feet long, this section, but hopefully the camera can get in there, we can see what we got, and we'll make a decision at that time. So I'm sure that John there and Akron will send his crew over to help us with that.
Is that something that, once we find out what's going on, we'll have to talk about to decide what to do, or?
Uh...
I guess maybe depending on the size of the project?
Yes, we could look and see what's in our budget for drainage, and I think the worst, the figure I got anyways, the worst scenario if we had to place the line, it'd be like, I don't know, I think he said like $6,000, way to replace the pole out of the line. And hopefully, we can isolate it, cut that piece out, put a piece in, and go ahead with that. He looked in it today though, and he said he could see where it's been spliced a few times already, so I could tell you, over the years, he probably had a lot of trouble down on Spring Street. There's trees down there, there's a big willow tree, and I think they're finding their way into the bell ends of this pipe and just clogging it up. So it's flooded the last couple winters, right?
In the one in that, like, parking, parking lot?
Yes, where the gravel is, that's right, you're still there. So we'll, we'll take care of it. We're gonna eliminate that problem. Still awaiting the delivery of equipment for the plant sewer upgrades. I did talk with Eric Weiss though, and brought up about starting on the basins that are flooding or we're getting a lot of infiltration, and he, he's telling me that they will be addressing these. It may not be until even February, but they're, they plan on addressing these, how many were their bad ones, three or four that were real bad? And they want to adjust those before the spring thaw, so we don't get the extra, all the extra flow in there, because it, you know, overtaxes our sewer plant. So that, that will be getting addressed also. The electric guys bought a neutral aid cast aisle on Thursday, November 3rd. They did install a new pole at Hickory Park, power pole, and that was to enable underground service to be installed into the new park bathrooms. They installed temporary service to Hank Parker tents, he's putting up a new building in the back. And they installed conductor to Hank Parker's addition with mutual aid assistance from the Village of Churchill, so thank you Paul for that. And Paul was actually gonna send guys over tomorrow, who are gonna do that job tomorrow on our storm sewer, just to help our guys out. So thank you for that also, and...
Well, I know that's reciprocal, and I know when it's just down, or phone the other way, that I can make a phone call and get some assistance, so you're welcome, and that's the way mutual aid's supposed to work.
And you guys will be taking down the military banners for the season on Monday, the 14th, the banners that are on the road for the season. And we'll put them up again in the spring. I did attend the fire department meeting last night, George was there also, and they're, they're busy, I mean, they had, I believe it was 35 fire calls last month in October, I think 15 in the village, 17 in the town, and three in the town of Verigas, so they surely do provide a valuable service for this community, which, which should all be very grateful for, for all their volunteerism, so my hands off to the fire department here. That's all I got. Courtney?
I'll just touch on a few things, you can read my report, but I talked, I met with Mickey Hyatt, the manager of the Vicomposton Leroy, about some frauds going around. Barb and I had a conference call yesterday, bought a couple propaganda so that they have, so I'm gonna think that over, talk to Barb a little bit more, that's something I'll bring back to the board, once I come up with a plan. Barb is going to a conference on 28th and 29th for town duties, so the town is paying for that. But there is things there that will also be beneficial to the village, just wanted to point that out. The form that I passed around for the taxes is going to the county. You know, we only have $3,696.41 going to the county, which is an absolute record low. It's great, so the way it works, the county, you send it to the county, the county puts it on the county taxes to be collected, they take responsibility for the money, and then they give us a check for that amount, makes us whole, and then they worry about collecting, or if it's not collected, then, you know, we're closed and whatnot. So it's a great source, the county provides us, that they just give us the money, makes us whole, we don't have to worry about plenty from the liquid, but it's fair. The other thing I wanted to point out is, since Renee and I delivered a LED light bulb, we had a sharp increase in beat rebate requests, and month back to October, we gave out $6,475 in beat rebates, and this month, we've gotten quite a few as well, so the program is really going. A lot of people replacing furnaces, there are just a lot of incentives to replace furnaces, getting away from fossil fuels, and going to heat pumps and whatnot, a lot of furnaces can replace.
I would point out, according to your report, Eric, a great employee has signed up for the sewer classes at Morrisville, and the classes will be early next year, so it's important that we get a backup sewer operator here.
Is the village paying for that, or is that on his own?
No, the village pays for that.
Is that an online class, or?
No.
That'll be in-person, so. So that means some hotel stays, and travel and all that?
Okay. It's important that we have another person online that's gotta listen.
I had a question, and I just like... Oh, is there an agreement with them, like, once you get this, you're here for a certain number of years? Is there anything to that?
No, we, we have that with the electric, but we've never...
Just curious. Could that be nice?
Yeah, wanna jump and shift after this?
Yeah.
That could be something that we could add to the contract, when we negotiate the new contract?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He is on, he is, okay, he can speak in.
Yeah, he was, yeah. Yeah, I'll show up here, though.
Alright.
Okay. Can I have a motion to accept the officers' reports?
I'll make the motion.
For a second.
One second.
You want to review the building inspector's?
I don't give his report.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I'm taking my motion back.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't...
I as well. I just thought it was for chat information. Get some reports, though.
Courtney, do you know the remodeling of the apartments at 83, is that where the food place used to be down below?
Yeah, that's, I don't know, they were, seemed to be wanting, they got the permit, it seemed like they wanted to go all guns blazing, get it done, and then it just stopped. So they, the co-officers talked to them and tried to see why, what's going on, but they're, they're much longer, they're gonna have to come and review their permit.
When they have a year?
Yes.
It looks like they've got some walls kinda roughed in on the inside there, but nothing more.
Yeah, that's pretty much where they stopped, they gutted, have the dumpster outside, did some stud work, and then...
How's our nuisance animal's doing? Anything else on them, the dogs?
Um, the dogs are 35 some bleak, but the guy Scott, you saw him, I guess we were there on Saturday, it wasn't Scott, she said. Scott must own the house, but he rents the top and bottom, and I talked to another neighbor who walks their dog, he goes, there's two dogs downstairs, and there's two dogs upstairs. And I talked to Michelle, and she has one dog registered for the whole house. So I don't know what to do after that. And the dogs are better, he doesn't seem to have a nasty pit bull, the big one that he used to have, he seems to have another one.
They were well under control when we saw. Todd was there, yeah.
But the one bigger one he used to have, I don't see him with that one, I see him with the little one, it's like a different big dog.
They were very well behaved, and the dog came through and he, he pulled him under the grass, and he let him go by, and he was actually trying to train the dog, and take time with the dog, and so...
I guess it's not the house owner, it's tenants upstairs and downstairs, but Michelle, she goes, there's one dog registered for the whole house, and there's four dogs there, two up and two down. Oh, wow.
That would be a town issue, the dogs. Yeah. Okay. I don't know about this hot tube at 56 Rochester.
Sounds fun. I can't judge him for misfelony.
No. Okay.
I will make the motion to accept the reports, if the exception of the tube, assuming that's a tough.
Is there a second?
I'll go.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Privilege of the floor.
Just a question about, I know you're heading to brush pickup, but what, this is what if? What if there's a storm, the ones we've been having, and quite often, larger ones come down in there? What are we supposed to do?
We'll, we'll come around. If there's a storm...
So we just call, call village?
Well, you won't even have to call, just put them out there, and if there's a storm, historically, we've gone around after a storm, and we realize, you're gonna have limbs coming down your yard, and if that happens, great, just put them up by the road,
Okay, thank you.
and we'll pick them up. Anything else?
I mentioned to you about 17 Clinton Street with that pipe, it appears it's an old leftover from the telephone pole that used to be there. Remember we had that three poles at 13, 15, and 17?
Yeah.
And they were getting taken out because the village was renting them. And it looks like it's really low-grade wire there, it's not like even 110 wire, it's like a low-grade ground, but it doesn't go anywhere.
Is it, is it on an old pole?
It's not a pole, the pipe just comes off the ground for maybe...
I remember the pipe, I can, if they chopped that pole off short, or, we got our new poles along that way.
And then they, they came, Kirk Grass Major was in charge for the frontier, he came and got all three poles out.
Was that the old arc system, light system, probably?
I don't know.
I almost thought it was something for the reverend there, the minister's house, came up, when his service went underground, or...
I think, I think it's underground there.
Maybe it was a telephone?
Maybe it's telephone, the telephone pole used to be there, but then, you know, they took it out, so you don't have to pay rent on it anymore. I actually called them, I said, I called the cable company, I said, hey, you need to come take your, move your wires. Why? Because they got a telephone pole down that your wires attached, move it out. Well, they didn't call the telephone, that's not my problem, not the phone company, but if you wanna keep servicing that people with the cable, oh, your cables are the big electric pole.
I think it's telephone.
And don't, and don't wiggle it, because the village guys did a nice job, they lucky, they was digging.
I don't know, I'm looking at it, what was the address?
17 Clinton.
17 Clinton. So I don't, I don't need the gas company come an hour later after you're done. Throw a leak, or you wobble the pole back and forth, so it come out of the ground.
You know, are the poles on the other side of the street for telephone, aren't there?
Yeah. Everything comes across this telephone. Hell, no one thought it was, it was a bad leg that one time, and I had to stay there, but I don't know. Tim Loki was working there, that wire, so that's not electric ground, it's, it's low-grade wire, it's not even like 110, it's...
They dropped the service, dropped across the road, and came down to go underground into the house.
Global fire phones.
They were vacation, it's more like, oh, this pole is still here? Sticks out, you know, it's just there.
Good luck trying to get the phone company out here and do anything with it now.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Okay. Anything else? Privilege of the floor. Trustee concerns?
Excuse me, you're not gonna take the basketball that's down, right, with the banner and stuff, are you?
No.
They won't come down right now.
No, I know, because of the fact they don't...
I fixed it, so it can't come down.
Okay, well, thank you for doing that.
Well, these kids like to hang on, I told them, what are you doing? Do you see an NBA player that hangs on the net?
Well, they can reach the rim with your hands, but...
I said, the cable disappeared, the cable net disappeared. Well, it was over by the other, by the firemen's, over the other pavilion.
In the yard?
Yeah. Well, the zero turn chopped it up in little pieces. Why didn't you pick it up and take it down in the village yourself, instead of put it back up? I said, this one here, this net here? I said, this one here, this net here is from the minister's house, they don't need it anymore, so...
Appreciate it.
No one's gonna ride anymore in that, so I used those rods you use for insulation, and I could feed it through where the cable used to go, and I double tied cable ties for each loop. So it should be able to hold the kids that like to hang on the net.
No, we have no plan to take it north down.
They're in good shape until they pull them down.
I'd like to bring up, I had a call from a resident yesterday, or his grandkids like to play the court, like we love the court. He just wanted me to, but suggested the board that they light the court up at night.
They like the court what?
Light it up at home.
Lit up at night, is it enclosed at dusk?
We, we used to, we used to light the courts up, and all the neighbors across the street complained, because the kids would be over there at nine, ten, at night bouncing the balls around, and that's when we took the lights off the court for that reason. The park's supposed to close, what, nine o'clock?
Yeah.
And the kids are over there at ten, eleven o'clock, dribbling around, you know, hitting the backboard, and so we had complaints about that, so that's when we took the light out of there.
So I, that's what I thought too, and needed to dust it down, park.
I think there's a sign that says that up there.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I wouldn't be opposed during this time of the year, if there was a timer, ability to have it like till seven o'clock or something. It gets dark now at four thirty, in some nice days.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I certainly would support something like that, but at eight o'clock would probably be the latest. Just a suggestion, I mean, having kids previous in the village, I know they were up there all the time, rather have them doing that than out in the trees in the back doing whatever they were doing, so...
Courtney, our park for, our park hours of local law, if we decided, hey, we're gonna light it till nine, and now we're allowing them in there till nine when it says dusk at dawn, is that something we have to change, or something we ought to look into? Yeah, something I have to look into, because if there was a local law put in places along what kind of, but I probably doubt that they actually went to, took the steps to make it a local law.
Well, this eyes is open at seven o'clock at night, I think. Both entrances, I think, one from Lake and the one from Clinton.
Different signs.
Different times, yeah. Yeah, we can park grade that, right, and we can seasonal or something like that. Definitely would support that, the park is a lot of use.
I would be opposed to timing signs.
I think the pole is still there.
Yeah, I think so too.
The pole hasn't been taken out.
There's a basket used to go the other way, it's right north of south, not the northeast, it was.
This one, LED lamp, I'll double light up the whole. Probably like four hundred watt LED.
Equivalent, yeah.
Up there.
Certainly something to look into.
So who looks into that, then?
I don't know.
It's dark, five o'clock, gonna be dark.
Yeah, it is, you come home.
Well, it's gonna be winter time, too, wouldn't it?
But a nice day, it's a moderate day, the kids definitely are up there.
Okay.
I've seen kids shovel off the basketball court.
In the winter, yeah.
In the winter time.
Yeah. Yeah, I would, like you're saying, with a timer, I wouldn't even object to that. Trustee concerned, Emily?
No, nothing to...
Mike?
Nothing new?
George?
Can't think of a thing.
Oh.
Nothing here, thank you.
The last meeting we had, one of the trustee concerns was Emily's about the comprehensive plan, and if I brought this out, Courtney, do, how many of these do we have? I got an extra, this is an extra, do we have?
I don't know how many copies we have.
You must have, don't I?
Yeah, I'm in.
I mean, in order to be able to go through it, through it, you gotta have copies of it, I don't know how many we have.
All right, I'll hold them down, and if not, we can make some copies.
Okay.
Is it online?
It used to be on our website, I'm not sure if it is any longer.
I always part of that back in the day, I remember that.
Yeah, all the board members should have one, I mean, we're gonna start going through it.
Yeah.
I don't care if we just go through a few pages and then pass it out, you know?
Right.
Isn't the planning board really responsible for the comprehensive plan, and from my understanding, when I served on the planning board, we created the updated comprehensive plan.
They...
I didn't see it till completion, I was part of it, but...
Yeah, they go through it, and then they make...
They make the recommendations.
To the, to, to the village board.
Is that something that's been put on their plate, or we're asking them to do? Is that something they wanna do?
Well, it needs to be done.
They're supposed to be done.
Twenty sixteen, I believe.
I think you have a fifteen year window.
Yeah, it was twenty sixteen it was done, so I'm sure a few things have changed since then.
I, I thought that once it was completed, the council board could full vote, and then we can have more responsibility. There's some different sections in there, and maybe different...
Different responsibilities, is there a way to reach out to the county planning committee and find out? Because they are, my recollection is when we did this, they were out here kind of guiding as to how that whole process worked. It was fully paid, and I forget her name at that time, but... And what are we looking to do, I guess, is my question.
So, what?
Janice, that's her name?
Yeah.
What we've done in the past, and just kind of gone through, like, okay, what have we done? What are we working towards, so it's kind of on our minds, of this is what we're, even if it's done from that point, okay, we need to talk to this committee and say, like, hey, keep this in mind, we're working through this, so, yeah, just so we know and remember, and kind of are staying on top of it.
Yeah.
I agree.
Going in six years?
I, I, again, I may just be speaking in complete smoke, but I think this is supposed to be the plan from sixteen onward for a ten to fifteen year period, so I agree with you, I think we should be staying on top of it as to what it is that the committee back then approved, and what our responsibilities are to monitor, right?
I like what Emily's saying, some things have been changed already, and by going through, we can, we can address the things that have been changed already, just to make it more current.
I feel like there's like a, I feel like there's a document online that has been updated with things, like notes have been taken on it. I can look back and see if I have something, like if it was shared, and I have something, but I feel like there was a document like that where we had that. At least, but, but there was something where it's like initially, I worked with someone, and we kind of went through, and then we're like, okay, we need to talk about this as a group, so it might, it might be like bits and pieces of stuff, but I will look and see if there is that. And then I wonder even, I don't know how things get passed on, if you would maybe have a document, like mayor's document of the updated of progress? I don't know, but I'll look, I'll look and see.
Well, Bella could answer that question. Okay, I think it's important that every board member had one of these, like you take, I got one.
Yeah, I'd like to have access to one at least.
Yeah, so we'll see what we can do with it.
I think I have one. I have one.
Okay.
I have one.
You have one.
I have one either.
One of yours too.
You got one of these?
Yeah, the comprehensive plan, yeah, for naming copies.
Okay. Good, good, okay.
I can remember that one for now?
Yeah, yeah, I got one. I've got another one, so, it's, I'd say read through them, and something catches your eye, make a note of it, and, you know, we'll discuss it. Looking at it in the morning, drinking coffee, just flipping through the pages and reading through it, a lot of it's got to do with the town, which is interesting reading too, but a lot of it, you know, pertains to the village.
Changing property, all these, property owners, what they can do with their property, vacant property, what they can build or not build.
Read it over, and make some notes, if you see something that catches your eye. All right, new business. Resolution twelve twenty-two is a New York class, is the official depository, we had Kathy Seville, she gave us a presentation at our last meeting. And we cabled it until tonight, to make a vote on that. Courtney, did you find out how much money had to stay in our account?
Yeah, it's five thousand dollars.
That's it, huh?
Yeah. Also found out we are, our current rate of return on our account is point two five.
Okay, what is she saying with me? Hers was?
Three, three something, I think.
Oh, two.
And it just went up because the Fed rate went, and so I got an email from her, said it went up by additional three quarter of a basis point.
So will that, doing this, impact anything with the paying the cash out fraud stuff? Will that make a difference of what you feel like, what we feel like we need to do, or how that works?
No, the fraud that they see the most is through, when we send checks out to people, people, and then somebody intercepts those checks, and then recreates the checks, so it would only affect the, so we have the main account, and then the accounts payable, and the trust agency account for bills and payroll, we only, there's no money in those accounts until, you know, like tomorrow, when we could, we will move the money of the main account into accounts payable, and then send the checks out. So it's only those two accounts that will be affected by the fraud stuff.
So I see, I see no reason not to do this, Court, you're...
Yeah, you know, at least these days where we need all the extra revenue we can get, this is, you know, will increase our revenue more than probably in a year than a two percent tax increase.
That's huge.
So, I mean, I think it's a no brainer. Now that the rates aren't that high, we might take advantage of it.
Seems smart to me.
I'm on board, your resolution, or?
Yeah, a motion. Your motion to adopt this?
I will make that motion.
Zero second.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Bruce, this is the correct date on here, March twenty eighth, twenty nineteen? If you just see the presentation?
Right, so that is a date that is, has to do with night class being restated or created, so they had a... She explained in that, the thing, that her presentation, they went through some changes, and that was a date they kind of re-corporated, or, so it hasn't, hasn't...
My other question, please. Money that you put into this account, does it, I can't, I was here for the presentation, frankly, I don't remember what she said. When you put that money in, you're putting supposedly surplus money, that you don't need to use regularly. Does it have to stay in for a specific period of time, in case you have to move it for something unexpected comes up, or are you gonna do that?
There's no, she, she did say, it takes, if we wire it, it takes a day for the money to move over, or two days if it's for an ACH. So getting the money from there back to one of the other accounts is the only delay, there's, there's no time period that we have to do money in there, that's broad.
You never know when something unexpected might come up, and then it might be in the bind.
Oh, right.
So you need to, you know, to know, to have that money available when you need it. Thank you.
Yeah, any other discussion on this? You made a motion?
I think so.
Yeah, is there a second?
I think might be the first motion. Yeah, I'll make a motion, two second.
One second.
Holdings in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the second thing on new business is our virgin fire department budget. You all have copies of it, and Courtney sent it again in your emails. Any discussion on this virgin fire department budget?
I'd just like to say that they held the line on it, if it wasn't for what's happened to fuel prices, and diesel fuel especially, they would have been close to holding the line, absolutely, so the lion's share, the increases, is the expense of diesel fuel for their operations, so...
I felt the same way. They do a great job. I'm all in favor of this budget. Any other discussion on it? Emily? I'll entertain a motion to accept the firm budget for two thousand twenty-three?
I'll make the motion to accept the fireman's budget for two thousand twenty-three, I'll second it.
Holdings in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Three property taxes to the county for collection? How much did you say it was, Courtney?
Uh, three thousand six hundred ninety-six dollars and forty bucks cents.
Courtney was saying, that's an awful amount, really low, it's good, it's...
Do we historically get that back, Courtney, from collections?
Yeah, county, county reverses us, the county adds it to the tax bill, so...
Okay.
It just takes a little longer, but everybody gets their money, or they go into firm closure.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Want to entertain a motion to send these property taxes to the county for collection?
I will make a motion.
Mike, second?
I'll second.
Holdings in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you for that. Under old business is Hickory Park bathroom update. The doors did come in, and the frames came in. Unfortunately, we were planning on doing them this Thursday, Dilture construction there was gonna be doing that part of the job for us, but the guy that works for Martin ended up leaving, who was his door installer, and they have to cut the block out and everything, so... We're gonna be planning on doing this right up to Thanksgiving now. Getting the doors in there. We did get the electric underground run to the building, it's buried in conduit, the underground's coming off the new pole they put in, and that, the line, the wires are now inside the bathroom, we're gonna wait to install the new service panel until the demolition's done. So it's not in the way, it's gonna get pretty dusty in there, they're cutting all that block and everything in there, the floor, so... So that's the plan on the park bathroom, is once the doors are in, we'll start tearing all the petitions out, and the toilets out of there, and all the sinks and plumbing, and start putting the new walls up, and we'll get the toilets and sinks and everything, and the guys will be working on that during the winter time.
Are you doing the doors, or another contractor?
Uh, actually, I think we're gonna try and do it now, try, well, not the door, but the frame, get the framing in. Our guys just aren't comfortable with parts of it, we're trying to research it, and I'm trying to get ahold of the gentleman who left Martin Dilture's, if he'll come over and just kind of give us a walkthrough, you know, how exactly is this done? So I, I think he'll do that, he's a good guy, and gonna reach out to him and see if he'll stop by the shop and walk the guy through it, and I'll be there and see if we can do that, so... Some of the demolition, though, is gonna be done by Martin's guy, there's another big wall that goes down in the center of the building, on the inside, they're gonna be, you have to cut that wall out, so we can put a petition wall in, and then behind that wall will be roughly a three foot chase area for all the plumbing and the electric, and... And, yeah, all the plumbing for the toilets and everything. We're trying to make everything as vandal proof as we can. Automatic flush toilets, you know, anything we can eliminate kids messing with for vandalism, we're trying to do, so. We're trying to get all the plumbing, as much as we can behind the walls, so there's.
Do we have cameras in the park?
We have them outside on the, on the poles.
That face the bathroom or not?
Yes.
So were the village employees doing the majority of the work? We anticipate there'll be money left in the grant after?
That's why we went from ninety-two thousand dollars that was quoted from the engineering firm that did the study to fifty. You know, it's still a ballpark figure, but.
But there should be some monies left in that grant?
Oh, there should be, yes, because the grant was a hundred and fifteen.
Are there time constraints on the spending of that money from the grant?
Twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six? And I'm assuming, I'm assuming the rest of the money is going to be allocated to the parks as well?
Pretty much, yes.
And that'll be part of the park committee's job to kind of.
We already got the wheels turning on that one. Yeah.
Okay. And then that'll be given to us as you guys go?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Great. John?
Has there been any plans made?
For the park?
No, the, the. Is there plans?
Or your designs?
Yeah.
Yeah, we got, you know, a rough sketch of what we want to do in there. You know, I've got the dimensions, because it's got to be all ADA compliant. So there's certain guidelines, ADA rules that you have to follow for spacing of everything and height requirements and.
Is the location of the doors different?
Yeah. They're going to be on the front of the building, not on the sides. Two doors will be on the front and then there'll be one door on the very back of the building. For maintenance area back there.
There's a way that perhaps I would just make a suggestion to put up some signage that says, these bathrooms are monitored. And some, I'm assuming that's in the plan so that it would, you know, perhaps dissuade vandalism, you know.
I think auto locking them at whatever hour you.
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock is not.
Can you auto lock without someone being inside though?
Yeah. What happens, let's just say you set it for nine and you happen to go in there two minutes to nine and you take ten minutes in there for whatever reason. There's a motion sensor on the ceiling that says, hey, there's motion, open the door, let them out. Won't let you re-enter.
I, I support that.
It's part of the planning and part of the budget, number of the pills.
Paul's got those, they have those in church though. Those are auto locks. So, could be nice. Anything else before proceed to close? I'll entertain a motion to close.
I'm with motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Callers in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.